Topic of the hour, the budget. Dr. Jones, I'll let you open if there's anything that you want to share and then you may turn it off to others, but I want to give you the first opportunity to provide any comments.
Before we do that. Oh, never mind.
I don't have anything to share. I'm just glad to be here.
Let, I'll, I'll share something.
Oh, you are on here. Sorry.
It's okay. Maybe you didn't recognize me with my beautiful hair, but, but just, just to remind everyone, our objective since the school board, since the Board of Supervisors adopted the budget was to put a budget in front of you that supported your budget that you voted six to one. So the objective was to find federal dollars that I wanted to mention, talk very briefly about this. This money was the latest pool of federal dollars that was approved by Congress. We were not initially planning to use this money to balance the school budget, but in light of everything, this seemed like a reasonable one-time opportunity. I guess what I'm encouraging you is that this money is to 2023 and a good portion of this money has to go to learning loss and other things over the next few years. So I do want to thank Chris and many others for putting together a budget that meets all the objectives of what the school board adopted a few months ago. All right. Thank you.
Dr. Warner, did you have anything you wanted to add? Go ahead.
Well, first, I, I do want to thank Chris for all the effort he puts into pulling these numbers together. I am a little bit concerned that using federal dollars, that at some point we're going to run into a fiscal cliff. I can see the justification for additional social workers and some of these other positions as far money goes, just because we.
You're going in and out, Elizabeth. You're going in and out, Dr. Warner.
Sorry. I know that it's, it's going to be, for some of our students, there's going to be a lot of social emotional. I know it was something that the Board of Supervisors also mentioned and we're concerned about. It's just that after these federal dollars, what will the hold look like? I guess is the thing I'm most concerned about.
Why don't we let Chris present what we may have already seen and then we can move into that discussion? Is that okay? But Doc, Dr. Kizer, you let me know, but I was thinking probably Mr. Fulmer was going to take a little bit of the lead for a moment.
Yeah, yep, he's.
I see on the agenda that we have a roll call. Are we going to do that?
We certainly can. Has Trish joined us yet?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, then why don't we go ahead and do that? Sorry, I was just ready to jump in. So Missy, are you on?
Yes, ma'am.
Why don't you go ahead and call out each person's name so they can say that they are present as opposed to be going around?
All right, Dr. Chase. Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy. Ms. Hollerback.
Here.
Okay. Ms. Randall.
Here. And Ms. Healy is on.
Right. Ms. Young.
I'm here. Can I ask a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
I got all of you then. You have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Um, Missy, there is an advanced something I'm showing and somebody named Klein. Are they part of our Laura Ann Klein?
Yes. Advanced Media are the ones who do the live streaming and the broadcasting for us. So they have to be logged into the meeting and Ms. Klein is HR.
Is who?
She's from HR.
Okay, okay.
All right. Since we have everybody here, this is a completely virtual meeting, so I don't believe we need to do anything to bring anybody in because we are already approved, I believe, for this as a meeting. As a virtual, because that was how it was also advertised. So I think with that, we can turn it over or back to Mr. Fulmer.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Hopefully you can see my screen. If not, I know this item is attached to the Board Docs agenda as well as I shared it with you a little bit ago this evening. So this is, should be familiar to all of you. This is just our summary where we track the adjustments throughout the budget process. The last three columns is where we can key on now. The, the third to last is what the school board approved a couple of months ago. The second to last column labeled adopted adjustments are the changes that we are proposing here. And then the final column is where we would end up with the school board adopted budget. I'm going to go actually down to the very, if you can see my mouse as I hover over the 150,000. I'm going to, so I'm going to go over the, the changes that we're proposing to get to a balanced budget. The first one is actually an increase in some E-rate funding. It's additional technology funding based on our, our spin levels that while we were reviewing the budget, realized that we believe that we can get an additional $150,000 in E-rate reimbursement. Also adjusting all of our state revenue, which I went over at the last board meeting. It's an additional 5.7 million, brings our total state increase to 13.2. And then also adjusting our county and local transfer down to what was approved in the county's budget. So that was a reduction of 7.7 million from the school board's adopted budget. That with the increase in the E-rate and the increase in the state funding required an adjustment of 1.776 million. And that'll line up very closely to what we shared with the Board of Supervisors and what we shared with you prior to sharing with the Board of Supervisors was the reclassification of some items over to federal funding. And I'm going to jump to the second page quickly. These are our adjustments to FTEs from last year's budget to this year's budget. You'll see that the school board added, it was 4.6 social workers. We're proposing that we actually shift those over to the federal funding. They would be, it would be an eligible expense. Additionally, on our other support positions, we're moving a network repair technician, which is also eligible due to the increase in our technology to help maintain that. So those are the positions that we're shifting over. And then additionally, we've moved some software, equipment and, and some other items from the operating budget into the federal funds. I just want to emphasize that none of these are cuts that we're not going to see next year. We're just moving the funding source. So it's shifting it from an operating funding source from local funding over to federal funding. And as Dr. Kizer mentioned, that federal funding is available, can be spent through September of 2023. So we have some flexibility there that these items will be able to even support an FY23 or we can look at phasing and shifting them back over to our local budget. So that's a high-level overview and I can go over individual items in more detail or answer any questions.
What I'll do is I will start and ask each, try and go through each board member. It's harder for me to, to see hands. So I'm just going to sort of start. Dr. Chase, do you want to start us? I'm, I'm just going to go right down the line, see if anybody has any questions, concerns or other, if you wouldn't mind starting us off.
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess my question is just this, so are we going to be under the 60,000 line, materials and supplies, 861 and a half thousand dollars? That's getting shifted to federal funds? Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
So what are, what, what are we, what are we shifting there so that in two years, if there's no money for whatever that 861 dollars is, what are we going to, I mean, are we, are we going to be okay not having those materials and supplies? Are we going to have to make a choice between materials and supplies and service employees or something like that in two years?
Yeah. So good question. And, and what we, what we did was try to target the items that were significantly impacted in the current years due to COVID and, and shifting to a virtual environment. So I, I can't say all of these, a lot of these are items that we'll have that choice to make as, hey, are we seeing value in this? Because even in the post-COVID world, and we're going to want to maintain and, and keep it going. Some of them, some of the items that we've shifted over to federal are clearly one-time use that we know that once we get back to our normal environment, we won't need anymore. Some of them will have to make that choice of, hey, do we want to continue these that we're adding to the budget? And, and at that point, we'll have to shift them over to local funding. And, and so we do have a couple of years to make that decision due to the, the multiple years of the federal funding. And that's where, but, but it gives us a couple of years to, to make that decision and to evaluate the effectiveness of those individual line items.
Sure. So can you tell me what they are?
Yeah, sure. Hold on. I'm going to, this is what I shared as well, but I'm going to give you a little bit, kind of verbally go over a little bit better breakdown than that. So especially in the materials and supplies, we had some additional air filters. If you remember, we'd already adjusted several hundred thousand dollars in air filters with going back through maintenance, identified an additional $30,000 of, of air filters. And that was more for, we increased the frequency that we're changing our air filters in our actual HVAC units. What we had moved before were the air filters that we knew we needed to purchase to maintain our air purifiers. So now we're, the increased cost that we have for HVAC air filters in our actual building units, we're shifting that over to federal funding. We have like projector technology equipment that we're shifting, about $300,000 of that. That was additional purchase for technology. We have several. And I thought I'll go through this. Actually, I'm going to, I'm kind of jumping between two screens, so I apologize. The hourly pay, that was hourly pay actually in the budget specifically for curriculum building for online and just additional like online teaching and support. So we know that that's definitely hourly or eligible for the federal funding and that is one that would clearly could phase out at the end of the online environment, virtual environment that we're in. We have about five different software items that add up to about almost $500,000 that are specific to the new environment that we're in. And those are, you know, some software that we may look at at the end of this and decide that we are, we don't need anymore. We may decide that there, we do see value in it even in a completely in-person school again. And then lastly, we had a, or, or two final things. Several items out of material and supplies that were specific actually out of student services that were more like nurse supplies and materials that we needed in a virtual environment. And then lastly, we are, we're providing more support this year for student fees. So as for students that need to take dual enrollment AP tests, items like that, we were providing additional support for them for potentially free and reduced and other families facing hardship. And so we had a couple hundred thousand dollars there set aside. And so we shifted that over to the federal funds to help provide that for those families. And then as I already mentioned, we had the additional social workers and the network tech repair here at, at the top summarized.
Is there a follow-up question? Anybody, Dr. Chase, I'll give you first dibs on kind of a follow-up, but then I'll, I'll move through, but you asked that, open the door.
Fine to let other people have a turn and then maybe we'll come back another round or something, but yeah.
All right. Ms. Healy, do you have any questions?
You're muted. You're still muted.
Yep. Ms. Healy, try, push that button on the bottom with the microphone and so we can make sure we hear you.
Okay, I was, I was pushing the wrong one. Okay. All right. So we're using the federal money to fill in the deficit on the budget that we had approved. So are there items that we would have used that federal money for that we're not going to be able to use it for because we're filling in the gap here? And that's my first question. And second, how much federal funding is there remaining after we use this 7 point, whatever million to meet the deficit?
So we're using 1.7 million right now of the 14.2 million dollars that was awarded over the two-year period, two and a half year period. Of that 14.2 million, 20% of it has to be used towards learning loss at a, a minimum of 20% has to be used for learning loss. So if you take from the 14.2, we're spending the, you know, a little, a little less than 2 million, 1.7 million. That brings us down. And then we have to reserve 20% of the 14.2, which was around $3 million for learning loss. So there's still eight or nine million dollars roughly to spend, to allocate.
Okay, that, that answers my question. And how much have we spent to date? Excluding this 1.7 that we're talking about in the budget today?
So of the 14.2 that was most recently awarded, we actually have not spent any of that.
Okay, I don't have any follow-up questions at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Hollerback, do you have any questions?
I think all my questions have been answered through others. So thank you.
All right. Dr. Warner?
So there, I noticed there are two, so the social workers are going, Chris, the social workers are going to be applied to the federal funds, which I can, that can make sense. It says other support positions. And then it says the network technician. Is that the same support position or is there a different one? There's two, 72,564 salaries being, is it the same one or is it a different one?
That's the same one. Page two just summarizes. It pulls in the totals from page three.
Oh, okay. I see. That's what I wasn't sure. Are there any other restrictions on these federal dollars?
Yeah, there's restrictions, but they're broad enough that allow us to use them. Anything that's helping us. Learning loss is the key, obviously, but we're also anything targeting helping the school divisions deal with the pandemic and whether it's converting to virtual environments, whether it is air quality, we can use it towards improving air quality and, and some of those kind of 3R projects in the, in the buildings. Anything that helps with social distancing and cleaning supplies in the buildings as well.
Thank you. I, I have no additional questions at this time.
Ms. Young?
Yeah. So my questions may or may not necessarily have been answered, but I'm going to ask them anyway. Of course, you, you could let me know, right? So the federal dollars that are, if some of them are for SOQ and some of them are for COVID relief, are they targeted? And are we, is that what we're moving? Are we still shifting those or not? That's one question.
So I'm not sure if I completely understand the question. So the, the, the state money goes towards SOQs. The federal money isn't directly towards SOQs. The federal money has to be used towards response to COVID and the pandemic, whether that is the cleaning supplies, learning loss, et cetera.
So what, what I'm asking is I heard you say you, you were shifting local to federal. And so what I wanted to make sure is that the federal dollars that are for SOQ and for COVID, those are targeted and they're staying targeted. So you are planning on using that for, for that, right?
Yeah. So we're shifting things that were originally in your, in your school board approved budget, using local funds. We're shifting that because it's eligible, shifting it over to being funded with federal dollars.
Okay. And those include some salary positions?
Yes, the 4.6 social workers and the network tech.
Okay. So what happens after 2023? Because I don't think this is just COVID that we need them. We need them even after COVID. So what is the plan? Like, I know that you're, you're good with the money. So I was wondering, did you have a conversation, I'm sure, that the kids are probably did. And I don't want to overstep, but I'm sure you had conversations with the individual departments that say, I really, really need that after 2023? Or do we have some kind of a strategic plan to take care of that?
Yeah, good question. So we'll evaluate those. Obviously, the plan is that we're going to keep these positions after 2023. You know, and a lot's going to happen in the next two years as far as additional state funding, local funding. So it can be something that next year we look at and say, hey, let's start shifting those over to the local budget instead of waiting until 2023. And maybe you know, that's one approach or we, we wait until 2023 and then we ship them into the local budget and ask for that additional local funding.
So I know that we are working on this because I, I think I, I thought I heard Dr. Kizer mention it, where we're going to be doing studies anyway from here on forward. And we probably did a few with all the evaluations that we did. I just want us to not wait until the last minute because I think that we will have to do an assessment, a needs assessment or, you know, like just a background where we were before COVID, during COVID, and then after, so that we could keep up and not having to do that whole work. So I'm hoping that we are doing that analysis now on the loss of study, you know, the impact of not having the counselors, things of that nature. So I'm hoping that that's something that Dr. Kizer, I think you were thinking about, right?
Yes. Matter of fact, today, we had a pretty good conversation about school counselors and school counselors working over the summer and making sure that we don't wait till the fall to get the kids the support they need. So yeah, so to answer your question, yes.
Okay, good. That, that's all I have.
Ms. Randall?
Uh, most of mine have been answered, so that's good. But can you define learning loss? Is that something that is tested and then supported is learned? Because I saw it in a couple of different things where you're, you, you had dollars in the budget for learning loss, but, but then there was separate lines for instruction and separate lines for software and things like that. So I don't, I don't understand what's, what or who is encompassed in the word learning loss.
I could answer that. So learning loss is, is actually a very broad term, which we are glad the federal government and the state government is asking school systems to define or target children throughout the year. Remember, it's not just the summer that we believe due to, due to COVID, lost some academic opportunities. So you don't necessarily have to only look at it as students that might be failing or did poorly on the SROL test. It could be students that maybe would have taken some additional classes, but because of the virtual learning environment, whatever, that those classes were not able to be offered. So learning loss is not defined by the federal government, except to say that there's a recognition due to COVID that academic, academically, some students have not progressed like they would have if we were in a non-COVID environment. So there's, there's huge flexibility on, on learning loss. But what the federal government, as Chris has mentioned, is to make sure that 20% of the allocated funds is targeted for that, for that experience.
And then how, how do you think you would target that money? Like, how, how is it that, or have you thought of a way that we're going to use this for learning loss?
Okay, so the next, yeah, so the next school board meeting, next Tuesday, we're going to begin the conversation that will be our comprehensive summer outreach program. We've actually have some programs in place right now, but we're not using the federal grant. So again, we have to September of '23, but it could look like extra staff to work with students during the school day. It could look like having transportation available after school. So we could have students staying after school and making sure transportation is not a barrier. But of course, then we have to compensate staff to do that. It could be working with families and having homeschool learning programs in place. So it could look, it could look a lot different at each level. It could look different at each school. And it's definitely going to look a lot different at each school system. So we already have committees working. Next Tuesday, we'll present to you the work of many people putting together the summer program. And then we'll continue that collaboration with stakeholders throughout the district to talk to you about what we'll do in, starting mid-August when the kids come back.
And the other question I had was, I'm sorry.
Can I just jump in real quick? To my colleagues, I'm going to have to turn this meeting over to to the Dr. Warner, to Ms. Randall to go through it. I'm sorry that I have an event that's across the county that I need to go and speak at this evening. And I do apologize about that, but I want to make sure that I get there on time. So I will be turning this over to you all to go through another pass of questions. And we'll be speaking with you all tomorrow again on, on the topic as we move into next Tuesday. What I would like to make sure that we accomplish near, as we wrap up this evening, is sort of the amount of time that we believe we would like to, that we need to dedicate on Tuesday. We tentatively had a 5:30, depending on how, of course, there's not a vote, but just in terms of the best timing for it to start. If we believe it can be 6 o'clock, I will defer to the board members on what sort of the best timing is for that on Tuesday. So that would be just something I would like to make sure you all cover as, as you get to the end of feeling how much time is necessary for Tuesday. So again, I do apologize for this conflict. I certainly did not pick this time. Ms. Randall, you can't, you continue with your questions. I'm sorry. I felt bad interrupting, but I knew I was going to have to get on the road and could only listen going in and out. So thank you all and have a great evening.
Okay. Thank you, Holly. Chris, I, I believe I heard today that we will be given support again for another year of free lunches for next year. And all, and I'm not sure, does that also include breakfast? And does that change anything in our current budget numbers for next year?
Yeah. So you're right. It was just, I believe, released yesterday. A press release came out from the Federal Department for the agriculture that, that oversees that, that they are extending the, the free lunch for students through June 30th of next year. Brian Williams has reached out to our state representatives to make sure to make sure we're interpreting that properly and to see how that impacts us, you know, because there are a lot of little caveats that can sometimes be in there. We're pretty sure it's at the same, the, the same requirements that we've had this year as far as serving children. And so we think it's going to be lunch and breakfast for all children. Long story short, is we don't think it really impacts our budget because it ultimately, it definitely doesn't impact our operating budget. It would impact our nutrition budget possibly, but we're already looking at our nutrition budget and, you know, it's a, you know, an internal service fund. It basically takes care of itself and doesn't impact our operating fund. But it might change what our revenue sources are, just like we saw this year. So instead of seeing that coming in from students as far as paying for lunches, now we'll actually see it coming directly from the federal government as far as a reimbursement for those meals. But it's a, a great benefit that we were definitely excited to, to see extended through next year.
Thank you. That's all I have for right now. If we want to go to round two.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah. So I was visiting a couple of schools.
Yeah, so I was visiting a couple of schools and in one of the schools. I was in a classroom where the floor had gotten torn up and I was told that it was because the. When they were installing the hand sanitizer dispenser, it had fallen and messed up the tile. So. Are those kinds of repairs? Can federal funds be used to make repairs of damage that was caused by?
COVID related?
Yeah, I'm I'm sure it would. And to kind of expand on that, another thing that. We're seeing is the moving of desks frequently, you know, from storage back into classrooms has, you know. Kind of provided some wear and tear on some of our older desks and having to replace some of those chairs that are beginning to crack. So it something like that would definitely qualify.
But hopefully, we're making sure to have the appropriate documentation so we don't get in trouble, but I just didn't. I was surprised to see that and wanted to make sure that. That we would be able to take care of some of that damage.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Healy?
Did I push the right button?
Yes.
No, I don't have any. I don't have any follow-up questions. I'm. Glad to hear that there is still going to be a significant amount of money left because I. I would very much like to use this money for specific learning loss and not. All to to fill in the the gap for a budget that we had already determined we needed. You know, pre-COVID money becoming available. And I and I would like to ask when we can expect to get a report or a. A proposal on, you know, other items that are directly related to learning loss that we. You know, should consider putting in place for the coming school year.
Dr. Kizner, there's a, you're planning on, your your team is planning on presenting some of that information Tuesday, correct?
Yeah, we'll do Tuesday and then sometime in. I'll just say June or July, we'll we'll talk more about the fall of twenty twenty-two, of twenty twenty-one.
Just to follow up on that, are we using some of this money for assessment to determine? Ways to 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 most effectively target some of these students with and the learning laws?
Yeah, so we're using this pool of money. We're also using prior federal money and and money that we have in our budget for assessments. And you might have saw the state release yesterday on the SOL test, even though the SOL tests. The accountability is just for really for high school seniors. But they talk greatly about one of the reasons why we're doing the SOL test, besides that the federal government is requiring us. Is to have more data and information to help drive some of our instructional. Programs specifically to learning loss.
Thank you. Ms. Hollerbeck, do you have any additional questions?
So I'm I'm gonna just, Chris, so we're using roughly two million dollars of the federal funds. I guess the thing that I'm most concerned about is 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 how we. Adjust in the future so that we don't get, you know, so we aren't making some of these decisions last minute. But it sounds like a lot of these expenditures are expenditures that truly are related to COVID that we're we're moving into. These this federal pot. So the only ones that wouldn't be would be the personnel. What is the so? So 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 that would be roughly, what, four hundred thousand? In personnel costs that we would have to add back into our budget?
That's correct. It was four hundred, including the the social workers and the network tech. It was four hundred thousand, four hundred and seventeen thousand.
Ms. Randall?
I had one more. Oh, as these funds come up, Chris. Do we vote on any of this upcoming expenditure or is this just? Is this just done differently?
No, it will. It'll actually be coming to the board, not at the next meeting, but sometime in May. So the. The remainder of of what's left of this fourteen point three, fourteen point two million will. Will come to the board to discuss and vote, and it'll actually have to go to the board of supervisors to be appropriated still.
But let me just add something. I think Dr. Chase example of the hand sanitizer falling. And we need to replace the rug or whatever. So you do have to twenty twenty-three. And so it's approve and amend as as needs develop and. So I just don't want us to lose sight of that. There's not an expectation that you approve something that is locked into September of twenty twenty-three. But but yes, you will approve, but it won't, you should not be surprised at a later time we come back with an amendment.
And to add on to what Dr. Chase was talking about, Dr. Warner and I, when we were at Ferry Farm, they had the same thing happen. With their. Tile floor as well, is the hand sanitizer fell and tore the floor when they lifted it back up. But I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Ms. Young? Yeah, I don't have any more questions or maybe just a comment. Or two, maybe I do have a question. So one of my comment was that I noticed that. We inform ourselves, right? Or we wait for Dr. Kizner to send a link and. Dr. Chase sends a link, Dr. Warner sends a link, Ms. Young sends a link, everybody sends a link. And I was just wondering. Should we be creating, and this is something that I asked for, maybe I shouldn't call this strategic plan. But just some white paper that tells us where we're going, what's the best practice? And the fact that somebody's doing it ahead of us, let's let's get to that place and have something in place because what I hear. Thank you, the school board for supporting us. But, you know, we're evaluating, we're looking, we're we're working on this and, you know, we're we're now like almost over a year in this. So. We should take, you know, what we've learned and do an assessment, like I said before, but come out with something that. Is targeted and is is going to work. The second thing I have was I I drove through Hartwood yesterday and I saw these tiny little roads. That these buses have to drive on. And I I don't know how it works, but are we? There's a parent sent me an email to say that I've been asking for an extra stop because there's thirty kids waiting at a bus stop. And we have this COVID thing going on. So I think that we're we're, I I don't know if we need to get some information on that, but I would like some information on. Are we sending? More of the buses out and then having these kids pile up here? Or should we be looking at a plan to? I don't know, get more buses and can we use COVID money for that and hire? Bus drivers, even if it's temporary. For for this for this time period?
All right, let let me make a couple of quick comments. I'm not familiar, maybe Chris is familiar with the Hartwood situation. We're not going to be able to fix anything, address anything if we're not aware of it. So if. I say this every all the time, and I'll just say it again, if if a constituent is sharing a concern with you. And administration's not aware of it, they don't expect us to to address it. And many of you.
I just got it today, so I'm going to send it to you today.
Yeah. So that's one thing. Second, please recognize that the fourteen point three million, whatever is, whatever it is, is all new. I mean, President Biden just, I don't know if he even reached his hundred days yet. So this money, we're fortunate to have. And we, I would say that in a perfect world, we would not want to dip into the one point eight million. Right now, but in light of the board of supervisors' action and to support the borders, the school board's budget. We feel very comfortable that the line items that we have targeted identified meet the requirements of of the money. I also would tell you a white paper or think a strategic roadmap is not necessarily bad. Just understanding that this thing is far from over. This is still remarkably fluid. As we sit here on April twenty-second. I I have said this every time I write a letter to the community. There's still a lot of unknowns. We are marching towards. Five-day-a-week regular school year, but there's still issues such as social distancing. You know, the three feet of regular school year, we would be like one feet. So I I guess I'm saying is I don't want to be too specific because there's still a lot of unknowns that. That are that are going to confront us.
And I totally get that. I just need the public to know what we're doing and where we're at, and we could always amend. But the part of the buses that we're referring to is, would we be able to do something like that since we're talking about six feet, three feet? And, you know, we're trying to get as many kids in school. Should we look at that? And that's all I'm asking. Just get it.
And and one thing I just quickly ended with, our issue is not enough buses. Our issue is not enough bus drivers. We got a lot of buses. We need to get more drivers.
Give them some, give those that are coming in some raises or do something. We got some money. Like, we could do something. I'm just thinking outside the box.
I'll I'll just add, Ms. Young, we actually did use some of the CARES Act federal money. Federal money last summer to buy five additional school buses for that exact reason. It was an eligible. Expense that that we used it for.
Good. Good to know. So do you, does just roll call of the board members, do we feel like we could? Approve the budget? Next week, Tuesday? And do we need, do we do we need? How much time do we need before the meeting for the work session? Would six to seven work? Or do we all feel like we can move forward with these recommendations? I'm perfectly fine with six to seven. I mean, yeah, seven to a regular time.
I don't think I'm going to have any more questions based on everything we've done this evening and that. The work that Chris has done, explanations Chris has given us and Dr. Kizner. I think I'm comfortable with proceeding. Like Pam at the seven o'clock time.
And if there's any more questions, you can send it in writing and have Missy share it with everyone and get answers on that, but. You should be okay with the seven o'clock time. Okay, so we're canceling the work session for six to seven.
I don't mind you asking everyone else. I mean, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just Ms. Healy.
Yeah, I don't see any need for a work session if we're going to use this money to, and I'll call it, close the gap. I don't have any objection because I think it all does tie in with with the COVID needs. But also because there is a significant amount of remaining money that we will be able to allocate as well. So I don't I don't see any need for a a work session, provided that there's no additional changes. Other than what we're seeing in this proposal this evening.
Okay, Dr. Chase?
I I think I would agree. The only thing I would request. Is, could I get, could the board get an actual sort of? Item list of that eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars of materials and supplies and what those actually are or your best guesses to what those are? I mean, to just hear that it's software and it's whatever, it's a little. I I'd like a little more detail than that, if possible.
We we could do that.
Thank you. Then I I'm fine with starting at seven.
And we didn't discuss any changes today that needs updating on this sheet, right, Chris?
Correct. And I'll go ahead and update our resolution that the school board, you know, the approved resolution back. We'll get that updated as soon as possible, maybe even have it attached to the agenda when it goes live.
So effectively, our budget as we proposed is. Is is fundamentally going to be funded. We're just filling in the gap with the federal dollars. And this is the budget that we approved six to one. A few months ago. So if everybody is in agreement, I don't hear any dissension, then we will cancel the work session. For prior to the meeting and Chris will attach the budget budget resolution to the agenda. Is that acceptable to everyone?
I I have one more question and I I just, if I. Answer this and I just missed it. So the other salary and benefits adjustment of a quarter million dollars, remind me what that is?
Adjustments to hourly wages. So some of that was the curriculum development work and items like that.
I I I remember now. I just, in in looking at it on the summary page, I was sort of like now was what was that? I went through the three pages and I didn't see it again. So, great. Thank you so much.
Yep.
And some of those expenditures should be decreased over time since. We have been utilizing a lot of this virtual learning platform, and I think the teachers have been developing. So our cost for professional development for the virtual platform should be declining over time anyway, correct?
Correct, yeah. The cost of building it all and and creating that curriculum will go down, yes.
Okay, Chris, one more question. I'm going to ask the same question again. Nothing on this sheet. Has changed in terms of what you've discussed today. The only thing you're going to do is. Get an attachment that gives some details on on how you're going to spend that money. I see on the sheet number three, it says note. Network technician position will be funded with federal grant position will not be eliminated from budget. That's not new, correct?
No, so that's exactly what we've talked about. I put that note on there just to make sure it was clear when people look at it to see a reduction. But it doesn't mean that we're eliminating it. We're still going to have those positions and we're going to have these items. It'll just be federally funded.
Okay. All right, if there's no additional questions and everybody's comfortable with the resolution, Chris will be sending us a detailed list of that eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And the resolution will be attached to the agenda and we'll save everybody Tuesday at seven o'clock. Okay.
Thank you.
And the meeting is adjourned.